Okay, I want to welcome everyone to the January 3rd Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. And we've already done the Pledge of Allegiance at our reorg meeting and we did a roll call then. I want to announce the fact that we had an executive session that was held on December 13th, 2021, and January 3rd, 2022, where we discussed potential litigation, property acquisition, and personnel issues. The overview of the virtual meeting protocols, EJ, do you want to do that again?
Yeah, because we may have some new attendees. So just real quick, if you have any questions or comment, if you're attending remotely through the Zoom webinar and you have any questions or comments, please submit them using the Q&amp;A function. Please be sure to include your name and address in your comments. We will read them and address them at the appropriate time in the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our regular business meeting. Unfortunately, the consent agenda items will have to be tabled till next month. We don't have a quorum to approve them this evening.
I think we can still vote on the monthly reports.
Yes. Okay.
Just not the minutes.
Just not the minutes. Okay. The acceptance of reports, all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of December 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The treasurer's report and payment of bills for the period ending December 31st, 2021, consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and the approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comments, EJ?
Yeah, I will, if that's all right with you, Laurie, I'll give the treasurer's report this time. Because I don't think you've had a chance to prepare yet for your new role as treasurer.
Not quite yet. In 15 minutes, you know?
So at the end of December 31st, so at year end, the general fund showed a balance of $3,354,586, which was a decrease of a little over $1.1 million from the end of the previous month. But that includes $650,000 that was transferred out of the general fund into reserve accounts as previously approved by the board. So $500,000 of that was moved into the Capital Highways Fund, $150,000 of that was moved into the Municipal Complex Fund. So only an actual decrease in township funds of about, what was that, $450,000-ish, which is pretty typical for the month of December. The month of December is usually, we don't bring in a lot of revenue. We had three pay, this year, we had three payrolls in December, whereas most months we only have two. But then in addition to the three payrolls, there's special compensation, there's special payrolls in the month of December for employees selling back on sick time, vacation, things like that. So December is always an expensive month, so we expect to see that number go down. So I don't have final numbers for you yet on the year, but we're projecting that we did, even after making those transfers, we finished the year with a general fund surplus of somewhere north of $420,000. Again, that's after making those transfers, so that's enough to cover the carryover in the 2022 budget of about $333,000, while still leaving an additional net surplus of unencumbered fund balance to continue growing the township's reserves.
Great. Okay. So there's been a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from board? Any comments or questions from anyone here? Are there any comments or questions from, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two-minute reports from board liaisons. I have nothing. Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Actually, I do kind of have something to report, even though I'm not a liaison. Chief Frye and I met with the transportation managers at the school district over Christmas break, so they could kind of, you know, just talk about, winter is coming, what else can I say? And just to talk about, you know, communication with our chief of police and the bus transportation. So we met with them. And I also have a meeting scheduled next Wednesday with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and I'm not really sure who Dr. Garantano is. He's somebody else that works at the school district. And the three of them and the two of us are going to go and we're going to meet. And Dr. Fagley has an agenda all ready for you. I have no idea, I'm going to make the introductions and then you guys are just going to go. So that's pretty much all I have, just to let you guys know that. So you don't have anything, Bob?
No.
Okay.
I was going to bring up something similar, say, the chief and I met and it looks like the transition's going well there. The pension fund, we had our meeting and that was very solid, other than that.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we're in good shape there. I think we're actually going to possibly reduce the amount that we have to put in because it's been so successful that we're bordering on getting to the point where it might be overfunded, so.
Okay, that's really good to hear. So lowering the MMO. Yay! That would be awesome. Okay, EJ?
I just have two. As you, I think we reported last month that Creek Road was anticipated to be opened in December. It is open. The work that the county was doing to repair the bridge was completed, I think, right before Christmas and it was opened. As a result of that, an update that we haven't had for a while is on the transportation impact fee study and the work of the advisory committee. Their work has kind of been put on hold because the next step is the traffic engineer conducting traffic studies and traffic counts of the intersections that are included in the study. The closure of Creek Road has a significant impact on several of the intersections, not just the intersections at Creek Road, but several of the surrounding intersections. So they needed to wait for the road to be reopened, which it is now. So they plan on starting those studies and the traffic counts at some point this month of January. The only other thing I have is just a reminder with winter coming for Valley Park, that the trail at Valley Park is not plowed and maintained during the wintertime. So there's a sign at the park that it's, you know, closed during implement weather. We do not gate or lock the park, so access is never fully blocked, but the trail itself is not maintained or cleared. So just wanted to remind everybody of that. That's it.
So they can use it at their own risk?
Yeah, for snowshoes or cross-country skiing.
Okay.
But other than that, the reason for that is we had, when we were purchasing the equipment for the park and we were looking at some different options for plowing and salting, the board did not want any soil or any chemicals put down as de-icer. So from a liability perspective, we were advised that we shouldn't do anything on the trail at all then because it would be a liability to plow and clear the snow and then not put anything down as a de-icer. So we just, the parking lot is plowed and maintained, but nothing on the trail.
Moving on, board discussion items, old business, consider issuing notice of intent to award bid to Dolly Construction Corporation for the Paul Lemon Drive project. EJ?
Yeah, so I'm actually going to turn that over to Paul, I think. So this is, well, I'll give a brief intro, Paul, and then you can kind of get into specifics. But we had the bid opening for the Paul Lemon Drive Stormwater Project on December...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, it was a Friday, thank you. We have five bids submitted. Dolly Construction came in as the lowest responsible bidder. The township engineer has conducted some, a thorough review of their bid and some due diligence. They've checked some references. They've been in contact with the contractor to verify some of the questions with their bid and feel comfortable moving forward with recommending them. And I will just note that their bid came in under budget and under the projected, the project estimate for this construction project. So the total bid for the base bid, alternate B and alternate C, $746,933.50.
What?
The estimated cost was $976,460, and that did not include an estimate for alternate C.
Correct.
So you could probably tack on like another $100,000 roughly as the project estimate.
Okay.
At a very high level, what does the project consist of?
It consists of basically installing a storm sewer system on Paul Lemon Drive, but Paul Lemon is very curved and steeply sloped from top to bottom. So it's a series of drop manholes, inlets and drop manholes to kind of slow the flow of the water.
Yeah, dissipate the energy of water.
Stormwater has created a cavern in the wooded area. I could probably stand on your shoulders, and that's how deep it is.
Yeah.
So...
My shoulders.
Large trees are falling.
And trees are falling. So we want to get the water away from the wooded area. I know this sounds counterintuitive, but we want to get the water away from that cavern and put it underneath the road so that it goes downhill in a controlled stormwater system. So it's probably not a bad idea for you to go up and take a look at it. So if you want to go take a look at it some Saturday or Sunday morning or whatever, it's probably a bit too dark to do it in the evenings, just give me a yell and we can go up and take a look at it together.
Okay, thanks.
And Paul, could you just briefly walk through the process here of the board issues the notice of intent to award, then what happens next?
Yeah, the notice of intent to award that will give the contractor the ability to go through and to purchase the materials. As we know that there's construction, there's a supply chain issue ongoing. So, and that was one of the concerns that they had, is that if there is a notice to proceed, will they be penalized for any delay in materials? And what we said is, we will give you the award, be in good faith for you to purchase the materials, and then we will have our pre-construction meeting and then we will officially provide the notice to proceed of work. That way they will have the materials procured, they'll be able to start to do the work, you know, once we have that meeting. That's really where the challenge is with everything, is to get the materials in hand. Pavement and things like that aren't necessarily as challenging. Stone is a bit of a challenge, but there's enough quarries locally. It's more of the pipe has really been the real challenge.
What is the estimate on lead time for the pipe now?
It was eight to 10 weeks.
That's not that bad.
No, it's approved, but again, it's all dependent upon how many suppliers go, how many townships or other entities go and try to go through some capital projects. So that's where the challenge has to come with getting the pipe.
How about references for this company?
Yes, we did reach out. We had two people come back to us, of course, it was over the holidays, so it was a little hard to get a lot of responses. One of the responses from NTEC Engineering, the municipal authority of Minersville, PA, they said that they were very good to work with.
Yes.
They had no issues with them on the projects they worked to. And we actually got a second one back today from HNRG. They are the Township Municipal Authority and Township Engineer for Lower Sputara Township. And they too were very happy with them. They did say that they are sometimes meticulous, so you'll want to have somebody, an inspector or someone there to go through questions. You don't want them, the one question is they might get themselves so involved on something they like lose scope. So we said, make sure you go there and you have an inspector or someone readily available to answer a phone call. So between, you know, us as TNM, the Township Engineer, and of course Nick always being local, we'd be able to address any of these questions quickly. So we felt confident with that. We did, we did, with the bid that came in, as we know, and we had gone through the prices, when Dolly had come in with their price, we were wanting to verify that they understood, you know, that their price. Everything on pending, which is how this was completed, was everyone could see what the final costs that were going to be from the five different contractors that were considered responsible. They came in lower, significantly lower, to the point where we wanted to make sure that they understood the full scope. They, we had conversations, they understood the scope, they're sticking to their price, they're confident with their price, and based off the references, that's why we gave a notice or a recommendation to.
Delta, are we looking at between them and the second?
Bob, can you speak louder so that we get you on...
I was asking, when you said there's a difference in the pricing that's significant, are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Yes, and the way the bid was done is there was the base bid, then there was alternate B, and then alternate C. So if we're just looking at base bid right now, which is the one that just started from the low point going all the way up to that issue where the drainage was, they came in at $597,588. The next closest person was $731,000. So there was a significant difference with just the base bid. Now, the way that we awarded this is the base bid, which is from the bottom all the way coming up to the ban, yes. And then we did do a pipe survey of the existing pipe from North Forge Valley or North Forge Mountain Road down to Paul Lemon where that cavern was, and the pipe was in good shape. So that allowed us to do alternate B, which is the cheaper version. We're still putting in the nice outlet or the new structure on North Forge Mountain Road, but we're not having to put in the whole pipe going down to Paul Lemon to that point. We're just going to utilize the existing pipe and cut it, and then we're going to take it downhill. And then alternate C, the genesis of that was during the process, some of the contractors were concerned about hitting rock. And we spoke to Nick, who's Township Roadmaster, he was not concerned about rock being hit. Aqua had recently done some water work along Paul Lemon Drive. They did hit it, but basically what was going to happen is that they were going to inflate their costs of the pipe installation in anticipation of hitting rock. As we know, some of these pipe rods are a little bit steeper, and I can understand their anxiety with it. So what we did is we said, put in your base price of what it would be, now is your alternate C. So when we award, when the township would award this bid, alternate C is still only going to be paid based off of direction received from Township State or the where the engineer. If they hit no rock, alternate C for Dolly, which is $101,250, they won't get paid for that. That is only a contingency that if they hit rock, the township is fully bonded to make sure that they don't walk away from the issue. So it just seems as if it was the best way to do it. So really, when you get down to this, there's a potential that this could be a $646,000 project if they don't...
That's amazing. I mean, the prices we were talking about before, I'm...
Yeah.
I'm unspeechless.
I will say, if you look at the other four, and this is all, like Paul said, this is all unpended, this is all public. If you were to just kind of average those other four, which are all kind of in the ballpark with each other, it was very close to what Paul's estimate was.
Yeah.
I mean, his estimate was really close to those numbers.
Have you ever worked with this dolly before?
I had not, no.
Okay.
So that's why we checked the references. And again, we reached out, but of course, dealing with trying to get references over Christmas, it was a challenge, but we did get a couple of people to give us a little bit of feedback. We appreciate it.
Now, some of this, we have received grant money from. Is there an expiration?
Yeah, there is. So it's a PA Small Water and Sewer Grant, $300,000. Off the top of my head, I don't remember when the expiration is, but we were awarded this grant, well, we applied for this grant before COVID. The award was given during COVID. And basically, upon the award being given, we were basically told, if you need an extension, I think it was a three-year, so I think we have till 20, I think we have till next year, 2023, I think is when it's...
Yeah, I remember this, the date of this one being a while.
But even if, for whatever reason, we need to push it on, we were basically told, just submit for the extension.
Okay.
What's the trigger for the grant? The expenditure of funds or commitment of funds?
Expenditure. It's a reimbursement grant.
We're talking nearly a 30% difference?
Yes.
Are the other companies based close to this area?
Bob, can you talk into your microphone?
Are the other companies all from this area and this company's further away? Is there any?
No, Dolly is, I believe they're in Warrington.
Okay.
So everybody here was in the general vicinity in the tri-state area.
Are they all union or non-union, or does that matter?
It doesn't matter.
This is a prevailing wage project, so it's required for any contractor.
Are we okay with just two references?
I can continue to pursue additional ones if you... Bob is concerned that it's so low, it's too good to be true.
In my industry, if one price stands out, it's way too low. You normally have to dig deep to see if there's any issues whatsoever, and this is a huge difference.
There are bonding protections.
Five percent, I could see. Thirty percent?
But we have...
When all four of the others are right in line?
But we have the bonding.
We have a bond protection, so, you know, they could go bankrupt, we should be protected with a bond.
Are you okay with it?
And legally, you have to award to the lowest responsible bidder.
We have to award to the lowest.
So we would have to substantiate that they are not responsible in order to throw them out. Yeah.
And you have a good feeling that they understand the project?
Yes, yes, we do. And that's, you know, in the breakdown that was provided to the board, you can see how we, the alternates and everything were broken out. So you can see where there was the pluses and the minuses, that somebody had more money in clearing and scrubbing, where actually Dolly had a little bit more expense in the paving area. So you don't know where they put their profits or their margins, et cetera, but when it comes down to it, that was the biggest concern. We wanted to make sure that they fully did understand what was the contract, what was the bid, and they stood firm with the number after we purposefully questioned it. I guess a good long bid is no reason to deny it.
I mean, if they meet the qualifications and there's a bond and you're going to write hard on them, make sure that it's done correctly.
Correct.
So are you looking for a motion this evening?
Yes.
Okay. I will make the motion to issue notice of intent to award the bid to Dolly Construction Corporation for the Paul Lemon Drive project. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any comments or questions from the public? No? Any more questions from board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion on the countywide Act 167 Stormwater Management Model Ordinance. Yay! Just what we need.
So I'll start off again, if that's all right, and then turn it over to Paul.
Absolutely.
This can be a really short conversation or a really long conversation.
It was a really long conversation at the planning commission meeting.
Correct. So Paul and his team provided comments from their perspective, recommendations for comments to the township that could be, now, keep in mind that this is available for public comment for anybody to submit comment on. So any resident can go in and submit comments on their own. But to submit comments formally on behalf of the township, Paul provided some recommendations, was discussed at length at the planning commission meeting on December 15th. The planning commission provided some additional comments to kind of supplement Paul's comments. Kim summarized them, and that summary was included in the Dropbox for the board for their meeting, and I can actually pull it up on the screen if you would like.
Did a great job, Kim, by the way. It was good.
So...
You took that very long meeting and made a really nice memo out of it.
So if the board has no issues or no additional, anything additional to add, then no action is really needed at all tonight. The comments have to be submitted by January 7th. And I'm getting to them right now. Here we go. So there were three, primarily three big areas that, on behalf of the township, we saw issues with. One is this inclusion in the new draft ordinance that no waivers could be granted. So currently, under the existing stormwater management ordinance, it's a standalone ordinance. If any applicants want waivers or exemptions, they apply directly to the Board of Supervisors and the board has the power to grant them. The draft model ordinance that's being considered now would require any waivers to get prior approval from the DEP and/or Chester County Conservation District before the board can grant them, which is a very significant change. The second major common area is in terms of the schedule and frequency of inspections for stormwater management facilities. And Paul, off the top of my head, I don't remember how this compares to what the current requirements are.
The current was, I believe it was in the, once, when it was being constructed, then once in the first three years, and then, again, it's, they always say after major storm events, but there wasn't really any enforcement on that, not just Scugaw Township, but most townships on this. What they want to propose now is that during construction, once a year for the first five years, after that five years, every three years, and then after every 10-year storm event. So it just puts a lot of inspection on it.
Which is now what could potentially be once a year.
Yes, I mean, yeah, technically every 10...
With all the storms that we've been getting.
Correct, correct. I mean, there would be, in the last two years, there's been over two 10-year storms. So everything would have been reviewed for another go-round. So one of the items that were in the workshops, as well as what was discussed at the planning commission, is maybe there's an ability to ease off on the gas on some of those inspections, maybe make it, you know, during constructions, understood maybe the first three years and after that, every three years, and then make it the 25-year storm. Again, that is coupled with, and I don't mean to take EJ's thunder, but the second part of it was the inspections of it. The question is, is that the township will be responsible for the inspections, or at least the enforcement of it. So it falls on two different entities. One entity could be, you levy this onto the individual homeowners so that every time, every year, they have to provide the township report. After that, they have to do it every three years, and then after every time there's a 10-year storm, that they have to do an inspection and provide a report to the township. This will be a big challenge for the township just to administratively try to do, if you're allocating that power directly to the person who owns the BMP on their property. The other option is that you would have your inspecting engineer, your inspection company go and do this. Again, it's a big expense for the township to go out there and to continually send somebody out there, even though it's probably half hour to an hour to do these. You're hopping and bopping around and doing this, it would cumulatively be very expensive. So one of the things that, in our memo, which we considered as a recommendation to the township, is that maybe you consider an impact fee that when somebody goes and they puts in a BMP, that there has to be like an escrow set up for this, so that, you know, during these inspection times, there is, the coffers of the township are not being hit as opposed to the person who installed it.
But that would come in later. You wouldn't put that in here now.
We wouldn't put that in there now, but the question is, do we want to try to change the inspection period at this point? And I think that there is, again, as far as townships are concerned, a lot of the real small rural townships in Chester County are very concerned about this because...
Yeah.
They certainly don't have the economic resources to do it.
So from a financial perspective, it's not appropriate to put, make those recommendations, to put it in there now? That would come later when we talked about this before?
Like the fees and everything, that would be for the Board of Supervisors to decide. There's other recommendations, you know, because the way the model ordinance is written is that there's the ability for townships to be more aggressive and more conservative. And again, the official adoption doesn't have to happen until September 30th of 2022. So we have time to go through this, but right now, January 7th is the deadline where townships as a collective entity can provide comment to Chester County. They will listen to it whether they incorporate it or not, then they take it up to the DEP's level, then there'll be public hearings on that, and then if the DEP approves it, comes back to the county for adoption, and at that point, we're assuming somewhere around the April and May time, the townships will have their ability to make it township-centric. So Scugaw Township can have a different, it can accept the model stormwater management ordinance, but can put nuances in it that would be different than Phoenixville Borough, you know, other municipalities.
Do you know if DEP or if the county is, and I know the answer to this, if they're going to help us with money? Yeah, I know, I know. Everybody's giggling, but I had to ask.
There was no mention of...
Yeah, of course not.
But there's nothing to preclude us at that time in April to pass an ordinance that would provide a funding mechanism for this?
Correct.
Is there any effort to work collaboratively with other, like through the Association of Township, second-class townships, to develop something that's a standard model ordinance for that kind of funding?
There wasn't a discussion... There wasn't a discussion about it at the meetings. And one of the big concerns about trying to find a standard would be that someone's putting in a BNP in their backyard just for a pool, and then you're going to have someone who's putting in BNP's in a commercial parking lot with a bunch of underground detention facilities. So the time and effort spent will be different. And that's where, I hate to say it's kind of like a wet finger in the air type of feel. Again, you guys got to go with a gut feel of what would be the need for the project. You know, a simple rain garden in someone's backyard for their pool won't need the same amount of time that an underground detention facility and a commercial parking lot would need. So I think that's where the township, you know, it's almost like the board, you know, at certain levels would have to make a decision on what would be the resolution for, you know, this entity or property owner.
But I think every township's going to be struggling with that same problem.
I agree with you. I would agree.
You'd think that you'd be able to calculate it based on sort of a volume of water that each facility is supposed to be handling, right? Or there should be some metric you could use?
Yeah, I'm sure that they're, I'm sure they could come up with one. I guess their biggest concern is that, you know, an individual homeowner might be paying out, you know, a lot more money than they really would need to. And that a big commercial entity would be, you know, the individual homeowners would be carrying most of the monies that were needed. It would be like an unfair, disappropriate amount of money being paid.
Knowing that this is coming down the pike, what do we do to start preparing for that, knowing that we're going to have to develop some kind of funding mechanism? Would we have a workshop to discuss how to develop a model ordinance for that?
Well, don't we have to adopt this in September? Is that what it is?
September 30th, 2020.
And they're supposed to have this finished by April, so we would have...
That's kind of a ballpark.
Okay.
We have time, but we should not wait until then.
Yeah. But we can't really do anything until we get the final.
So April?
So...
Yeah. And I think, do you know if, have they given any indication if they're going to have any more of these public sessions after the public comment period, with any updates or anything like that, or we don't know?
They did say that they would, but my gut would tell me that they've been very forthcoming in trying to get public feedback with this. So I'd be very surprised if after January 7th that they cut off all communications and just go right to the DEP. I would think that they would. There's nothing on the website that says that they will. It's just that they've been very active in public engagement up until this point.
After this public comment period closes, if they make any change, if they incorporate any of the comments received and make any changes prior to transmitting to DEP, would we be notified? Probably not, right?
At best, an email that says, "We are submitting on behalf of Chester County to the DEP for review."
Because it would be at that time that we would want to get a hand on it and get started then. You know, that, maybe that's in March as opposed to waiting till April or May. But I guess we just kind of need to keep an eye on things and try to find out when it's...
So who would we keep an eye on? The Chester County Planning Commission?
The Water Resources Authority.
The Water Resources Authority, okay.
Martha, you mentioned that there's a big concern with the first item as far as granting SWM waivers without approval until the DEP and everybody else approves. What's the impact of that?
Time?
Time to developer?
Well, this is where a homeowner comes in and needs a waiver on a very sympathetic application. We've had a few, and for a number of reasons, they just miss, and, you know, can't build a pool or he can't do something else without a waiver.
They might be like 10 feet over the allowed impervious cover.
There's good time with the metrics of what you're talking about also, to say if it's below X number of square feet of impervious or whatever, it's in a different category? Could that be split?
It just means the supervisors have no discretion at that point to grant the waiver. You just can't do it. It has to go back to the county, you know, to the DEP to, for the homeowner to get the waiver. Now, you know, the people who suffer there are the homeowners, but that's the change. And we haven't granted, we've granted two or three waivers that I remember. This hasn't been wholesale granting of waivers, but...
But some places have, is the concern.
That was the concern. It was, even in the model ordinance, they talk about how they want to have a strict adherence to this. They're very concerned with the amount of impending impervious cover, you know, for the build-out in Chester County. And with that being said, they don't want townships to just take it on their own to grant the stormwater management waivers. They really want a control over what's going on. And the way that they felt that that could be handled is through the Conservation District. And again, a lot of the language in this is very similar to how the MPDS permits are going with the county, as is, you have to justify if you are not using conservative design, if you're not doing green infrastructure, if you're not doing BNP's. It is a very hard battle if you are trying to avoid doing any of this, which is good, which the county is very smart with doing this. Just this mechanism will be challenging to the townships.
This is not retroactive, is it, for existing stormwater management facilities?
It is not.
Not even the inspection schedule?
It didn't say that it was retroactive. I would feel that they would be grandfathered at this point.
That question was asked at the planning commission, and I thought Kurt said that...
He asked about charging.
Oh, okay.
With the escrow option.
Okay. Okay. So to answer your question, this is going to cost homeowners a lot more money, a lot of time. It's going to cost the township a lot of money and a lot of time.
The inspection process mainly.
Well, that, and when we adopted...
Tracking everything.
Yeah, and tracking everything. And when we adopted this back in 2014, we said back then, this is going to cost us a lot of money. This is just even costing us more money and more time, and it's just going to come out of our residents.
And it doesn't address the existing failing stormwater management facilities that we have right now today?
Nope.
Because they're not captured by it?
No, this is all brand-new, whatever.
Is the majority of this focused on commercial construction and new developments, where the biggest issues are?
It really do develop, and they do have an appendix that talks about small projects and things. And that's not really a recommendation at this point to talk about. The Scugrel Township at this time does not have a small project.
Simplified method.
The simplified method. And again, my opinion is, for this township, and my experience is that that would not be very beneficial to the township, just based off of the amount of stormwater issues the township has had, how the township has been built, and how there's flooding and drainage issues all throughout. And the simplified method, they further simplified it so that only the waters that would be captured would have to be controlled by roof leaders. So even if you were doing something like a small driveway widening, and you think, oh, I can just put like a little stone channel next to it so the water runs off, that doesn't work anymore. That was the old method. The new method is, is that the bill, if you're going to do some additional impervious and it falls in the ability to use the simplified small project method, it can only be water that's taken from your roof by a roof leader to differing drainage facilities. So now you're going to have four, maybe five, little drainage beds all over a person's property because, you know, when houses are built, you don't always put into account to say, hey, I'm going to try to centralize all the water that's collecting off my roof, you know, pitch to one particular gutter, to one downspout. So I just feel as if that just got more complicated. I know it's supposed to be simple, but I think it went the other way. But that's something that the board supervisors can look at in May, June, July, when you're getting a little bit into the nuts and bolts of the ordinance.
Okay. Do you guys have any more questions?
Is there anything we need to do now, or is it...
If you're good with these comments and don't have anything to add, then these will be submitted. Paul, you'll submit them on behalf of the township?
Sure.
So you have a motion to...
Nope, we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion to...
Tim?
Yeah. Are any townships looking to challenge this giving up the right of a waiver from the board? Like, or is this a dumb deal? Is there any appeal process? Is there any appetite for that among other townships?
In the meetings I went to, it seemed as if there was a little pushback from some of the officials that were there, more like, it just seems like it's a nonsensical thing. It's just causing more headaches, very similar to what we're voicing here. But there wasn't any kind of collective thought, like, hey, we're going to stand up and go against this. They just were going to do a similar forum like Scugrel Township would do, and go through and complain about this. But again, as EJ had said, although Scugrel Township is a unified front, and we can submit the comments on behalf of Scugrel Township, everyone in this room, if you're a resident in Chester County, can also comment on it as well.
Individually, yeah.
So, Bill, I have a dumb question.
No such thing.
Isn't it, I don't know if illegal is the right word, but is it not proper to not be, to not allow a waiver?
Well, this is the making of legislation.
It's preemptive.
And the question is really, at the end of the day, that the legislature or the powers that be could do essentially what they want unless they violate some constitutional issue. They haven't done a legal review yet because we're not there yet. But it seems to me that, you know, the only way to stop this or change it is to say it violates some other provision of the law, possibly the state constitution or something else, and it's an uphill battle. They were able to pass the stormwater management regulations pretty much as they decided because it was a matter of their passing a law by virtue or, you know, pursuant to their own authority. So there's not much, you know, this is really, pushing off and saying it's really an engineering issue. I'll review it certainly for a law once it's ready to go. But to answer your question, you know, I don't see a challenge to Chester County or the DEP saying, we disagree with this, we'll have any legs.
Okay.
So I think one of the things that came up at the planning commission was, well, what if we just decide to go rogue and adopt an ordinance that really drastically changes some of the things in the model ordinance? So let's say the model ordinance, after it goes to DEP approval and the county approves it, includes this provision requiring waiver requests to go to the DEP in Chester County. And Scugrel decides, no, we disagree, we're going to adopt our ordinance and take that out. What are the ramifications then? Does that impact our MS4 permit? Is that basically what it is?
The model ordinance is being written with the Act 167, which is the stormwater ordinance of Pennsylvania. And they are doing that in conjunction with the MPDS and the MS4 program. So the adoption...
That's the regulatory legislative side of it that's kind of holding your feet to the fire.
So, yeah, if we don't do this, they're going to mess with us with the MS4 requirements.
And that is the biggest unfunded mandate that we have to deal with. And this is just another layer.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll listen to this comment and change that.
Or, you know... Or maybe make the waivers... Like, draw a line somewhere and say if they're this size, then they go before DEP or the Conservation District. Or if they're below this, let the township deal with it. Like you were just saying, you know, you're talking about a big, huge parking lot for a commercial development or whatever, or a brand-new housing development. And then you're talking about someone who wants to put in a pool and they have a rain garden. Can we give the waivers to small projects like rain gardens as opposed to not giving them to the bigger one?
As of now, as of now, no. I mean, they want strict adherence, and that's really, really, you know, it's actually even written into the model ordinance to how strict they want it.
I kind of have a feeling that's just, that comment of ours is going to be ignored. Keep it in there.
It's probably going to be one of the most common comments that they get.
I would agree.
Okay. Do you guys have any comments that you want to add to that? Okay, great. That was a long discussion. New business, the municipal complex capital expenditures. Should... I think we need to have a discussion about this before we make a motion. So can we just make this like a conversation first?
Sure.
Okay. EJ?
All right. So this proposal that we received from ScanTech, which is a co-star approved vendor, they do a lot of, they primarily work with municipalities in Pennsylvania. This is a project that we've been talking about doing for quite a while now and just haven't really gotten to this point yet. But basically, what this project aims to accomplish is digitizing as well as, first of all, purging township records and archives of what is not necessary for us to keep. And then of all the records that we are required to keep is to digitize them, catalog them, organize them, which will accomplish primarily two goals. One is to have a better organized filing system, which we currently expend a lot of, we, you know, get a lot of right-to-know requests and expend a lot of time looking for old files that are not well catalogued or organized. So this would kind of solve that problem. The other goal that it would accomplish is creating, is making more space. We have the giant file room in the back of the administrative office, which this would essentially clear out almost completely in digitizing everything in there, which would then allow that room to be finished and converted into office space or better utilized, which was included in this, well, it was included in the 2021 budget to do that. Never, we never got to it. It's also included in the 2022 budget. So the proposal that we got from ScanTech, they looked at basically everything from, in the file room, everything in the office, and everybody's office, and all the file cabinets, map files, everything we had in the office, and everything down at the old township building as well. So the proposal that they provided is all-inclusive of everything. The only thing that's not included in there is files from the police department.
I was just going to ask that.
Right. So that's not included. So the total cost for all of that, and they literally come on-site and do everything. So it would be, you know, minimal impact on the township staff other than just the coordination and approval at various stages throughout the process. So the proposal for the entire project is just over $90,000. However, we have the ability to pick and choose or to phase it. And I think, I just want to check my report here. The priority, the top priority would be the file storage room in the administrative office. If we wanted to start with that, and that is the biggest chunk of the entire project, that would be a little over $65,000. So this was all budgeted for out of the municipal complex capital fund. At the time, we didn't, when we adopted the budget, we didn't have any proposals. We estimated between $50,000 and $100,000 that this project would cost. So that's it in a nutshell. And I'll, Lori, anything that you think I missed?
Do you guys have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm wondering if this shouldn't be something we talk about more and bring it back next month?
Yeah, I'm thinking we need to have the entire board. This is a big chunk of money.
Mark and Susan, I think, would want to weigh in on this and understand before we go on.
Susan did send an email and ask if this could be, you know, maybe a workshop in January. And I responded and said, that's fine. Why don't we start the conversation tonight so that we can start gathering initial comments that you will have? So if you have any comments or questions, you know, the more, the more you provide those in advance, the more prepared staff can be to answer them.
I have to say, I mean, I have a lot of experience with record information management just as part of my job, and I'm not surprised by this figure. It sounds like what I would expect it to be. I'm curious why, was there a decision made not to digitize the police records?
Honestly, it was just the day that the guy from ScanTech was here. He took measurements and photos and stuff that was prior to Chief Frye starting, and Chief Fetterman wasn't in, and so we didn't want to walk him through the police department without Fetterman. So he just didn't access the police department that day.
Is there a need to digitize police records? Is there, would that be something that we'd want to discuss?
I...
Then we should, I would definitely support postponing a vote on this. Then we should, I would definitely support postponing a vote on this.
Martha, EJ, did you say that the 2022 budget does include the $90,000 x the police in terms of digitizing?
It does include, well, the money that was included wasn't specifically for admin or police. It anticipated, I mean, we budgeted like $250,000 in this line item to cover this project as well as finishing the file room, you know, drywall, finishing the insulation so that, convert that into actual office space. And that also included painting the exterior of the building. So, it was a big chunk of money that was allocated to these projects.
Yeah, I think we need to table this.
Yeah.
And, you know, really go through this and come up with any more questions.
One other question, did we get another proposal or was this the only one?
There aren't a lot of companies that do this. We have been in touch with, and I think you have a call next week.
I do.
The day after I leave, Lori has a video conference with another company. But from the little, we know about them and the little conversation we've had with them, they provide kind of the software and the cloud storage, but they don't really do any of the work. So, what's attractive about ScanTech is we are very short-staffed right now, and they do all the work. And because they work primarily with Pennsylvania municipalities, everything they do has to comply with the Pennsylvania Historical Commission Record Retention Manual, and they know that, they probably know that better than we do. They know that like the back of their hand.
The CoStarz approval gives you more confidence as well, right?
Yeah, the CoStarz approval, right. So, that removes the requirement to seek any additional quotes, but we're still trying. There's just not a lot of, there's just not a lot of companies that do this work.
So, that's what makes them more preferable than using an Iron Mountain or one of those vendors?
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, so guys, come up with your questions for Lori by our workshop meeting so that she can get us answers so that we can vote on this next month. Okay, moving on, consideration of approval for Chief Fetterman.
Well, you can set the purchase price at $0, then.
Okay.
Or you can amend the motion, which is probably fine, but you can just set the purchase price at $0 if you want. And that way, you won't have to amend the motion.
Okay. So, how would I set the purchase price at $0?
Just say purchases surface weapon at a no cost, at $0.
Okay, okay.
Or should they amend the motion?
Well, it can be amended, it can be a motion to authorize a retirement gift of the firearm without, with a value of, you know, between $3 and $4. You can do that as well. I mean, to say he's buying it for $0 is a good one.
We just need, would need to, you would need to make a motion first to amend the agenda if you wanted to do it that way.
Oh, yeah, it's always that amending stuff.
That's why, that's why I was thinking.
But you can do that. We just have to post the amended agenda tomorrow.
No, we have to pay for that.
No, just at the building. There's no way to do it.
Oh.
Right?
Make it a penny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For $1.
Either way.
Yeah.
You don't have to amend the agenda. Just make it a penny.
Consideration of approval for Chief Fetterman to purchase his service weapon from Schuylkill Township and transfer legally into his name for a purchase price of $1.
All right.
I'll second that.
I'll make that motion, and you'll second it. Okay. Any comments or questions?
Maybe we could just advise that in terms of Chief Fetterman's retirement, the issue really came down to whether there would be a retirement gift of his firearm. The fact that it's a firearm is irrelevant legally. The question is whether a township can make a gift to a retired employee. The answer to that question, they have to discussion with the Pennsylvania Ethics Department, their counsel, and looking through the ordinance. The answer is, it's lawful to do that. It's no different from having a goodbye party for retirement of an employee. So, the answer is, it's lawful to do so.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public? EJ, do you have any?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make sure you get that dollar.
I'll donate it.
I was just going to say, I'll pay the dollar.
Bought the gun.
Consider accepting the resignation of Township Manager Edward M. Mentery Jr. effective January 12th, 2022.
Madam Chairman, if I vote no, does he stay?
I was going to say, nobody's voting yes, so you gotta, you're on the hook.
I'll reluctantly make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I would say I oppose it. I am a solicitor. I have no vote. I just want to say it was a pleasure working with you for three years. He was on top of everything, and he was as excellent and always a worker. So, I'm joking about voting. I know the rules, but before the comment in public that he's done a terrific job, I can't...
After two Reeves Tract sets of hearings, he didn't jump ship.
Even the 5:00 AM one.
Even the 5:00 AM one.
You'll be missed. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, you have. You will definitely be missed. But I understand you're going to be driving through the township on your way to your new job.
Most likely, yes. Almost, no matter which way I go, Mike will at least touch a portion of Schuylkill.
We've discussed barricading the road in the morning.
I was just going to say, we'll make sure that we have an officer there that has a speed trap.
I have to bring you in for questioning once a week.
I'll bring tomato pie on my way home, though.
Great.
Let us know what kind of muffins you want. Tim will have them.
That's right.
Consider appointing Lori Getz as Acting Township Manager effective January 13th, 2022 pursuant to the Employment Agreement Addendum dated January 3rd, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider authorizing Lori Getz to attend the PA Municipal League Pell Raz Annual Training Conference. I'm sorry. At the Penn State Conference Center Hotel, March 16th to the 18th, 2022. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, my glasses just fogged up. Discussion on the 2022 PSATS Conference and Delegation of Attendees. The 2022 PSATS Conference is scheduled for April 24th to the 27th at the Hershey Lodge. Registration opens on January 11th, 2022. Who wants to go?
That's exactly why this is on the agenda.
Well, I know Mark said he wanted to go.
Yeah.
And...
And Lori.
Hello, Lori!
I'll raise my hand.
I'm not, I'm not, this is not my thing. I'm not comfortable with these things, so I'm not going.
It's like we have two good people. I'll stand back, too.
I mean, I would be interested in going. I think I, I'm just trying to think of my work schedule, but...
And you can go for like one or two days, three days.
You don't have to go through the entire thing.
The reason we do this right now is because the registration opens soon.
Yeah.
I mean, the registration never fills, but the hotels fill up soon.
But I could be authorized to go and then decline to go.
Yes.
I would like to go if there's an opportunity. I think it'd be a good experience.
I would recommend it. I think it'd be good as a new supervisor.
I could hold your hand if you go together.
No, that's okay. That's all right.
Be your support animal.
They are, yeah, my support animal. Okay, a motion authorizing Mark Donovan, Danielle Zouwen, and Lori Getz to attend the 2022 PSATS Conference with overnight accommodations if requested. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no resolutions. We have no subdivisions. We have no additional business announcements. The only announcement that I have is that the township offices will be closed on January 17th for Martin Luther King Day. Is there any public comment? Anyone in the room? Anyone online?
No one online.
Okay. I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.